Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilman Ed Rice, Secret Chairman of Land Use Committee. I welcome everyone to the Council of Chamers for the land use hearing. Before we start, we have three bills, but before we start or begin, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who is the staff person for land use. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, I'm going to do a quick roll call. If you could respond when I call your name. Chairman Riceinger?
Here.
Vice Chair Sneed? Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Costello?
Present.
Looks like Councilman Dorsey has not gotten here yet. Councilwoman Pinkett?
Here.
Councilwoman Middleton is not able to join us today. Councilman Stokes is not here yet. I think I just saw Councilman Dorsey login. Councilman Dorsey, are you there?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to go through public testimony procedures before we start?
Yes, thank you.
Just briefly discuss how the committee is going to conduct public testimony for the hearings today. If you're connecting via computer, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to testify. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and they don't have a raise hand function, and so we will unmute each caller one by one during the public testimony portion of the hearing. If you're calling in and you do not want to testify, please just say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when you are unmuted, and we ask that each speaker state their name prior to speaking. And if we cannot understand what speaker is saying, we'll ask them to call back or provide testimony in the chat function in WebEx. And here you can see in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, participants button and chat button. If you click on the participants button, you should have the raise hand button just above that to the right. Alternatively, it may be next to your name, depending on how you've logged in. If you're not able to find the raise hand button, you can also use the chat function to send a message to the host, and we'll make sure that you get the opportunity to Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to reiterate what Matt said. Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton has a prior commitment in her community, I think it's a ribbon cutting, so if she gets out at times, she'll join us. So I welcome all my committee members to the committee. The first bill, City Council Bill 20-0508, we're changing the zoning for the property known as 5401 Pulaski Highway. It's Block 6242C, Lot 003, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and res zoning it from I-1 zoning district to the C-4 zoning district. Let me state that all the public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, if she's present, the sponsor, Councilwoman McGray, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. You have the floor. You want to, to a bill?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the committee. As the chair stated, this is a zoning bill just changing the zoning for 5401 Pulaski from the I-1 zoning district to the C-4 zoning district to allow this particular business to expand their business to include more motor sales. I do want to make the committee aware that there is another car dealership that is literally abutting the property. It's right next door, and I do humbly ask for a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Councilwoman, and the information. So at this time, we will start with planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. This is Matt DeSantis with the Planning Department. This council bill was heard by the Planning Commission back on April 16th, and Planning Department's staff did not recommend favorably on the bill. The Planning Commission, however, voted unanimously to not concur with staff's recommendation and to recommend passage of the bill. So the Planning Commission supports the bill. I will just note, and as it's mentioned in laws memo, the staff report provided by Planning staff does not include findings supportive of the bill, but I do see the applicant's attorney is present, and so he might be able to provide supplementary findings, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for planning? No, no questions for planning? Okay, thank you. We will go on to BMZA. Thanks, Matt.
We have a due for the BMZA. The BMZA recommends disapproval of this bill.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Lena DePietra from the Law Department. Sorry, my head is sort of cut off here, but that's all right. Anyway, the Law Department quotes in our report that the Planning Commission, of course, there, since they, not the commission, but the staff originally did not support the bill, so for that reason, there are no facts in the planning report to support this change in the zoning of this property. We'll note that in this case, it would have to provide findings that would support a mistake in the underlying zoning. There must be substantial evidence that there's no existing fact that there are facts that the action was premised on a misapprehension at the time of the zoning. So something, when the original zoning took place, which was in the last comprehensive rezoning, they have to show that there was something that was forgotten or was misrepresented or was a mistake that was basis for the designation at that time. So with that in mind, if facts are supplied that meet the standards in the code, the Law Department can approve it for form of legal sufficiency, but at this point in time, we don't have that.
Okay, thank you, and we'll address that in a few minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing. We stand by our report in opposition.
No one from BDC?
BDC is here. Luis Cardona with BDC. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. BDC stands by its report as opposed to this bill.
Okay, thank you. We will now go on to, excuse me, we now go on to public testimony. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Representative for the applicant, Chris DiCarlo.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, can everybody hear me?
You're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. My name is Chris DiCarlo. I'm the attorney for the applicant, CBK Realty, Inc. I'd like to start off by connecting Councilwoman McGray for introducing this ordinance, and all the members of the Land Use Committee, as well as staff, are taking the time to consider this rezoning request. Regarding the proposed or the required findings under 5-508B for mistake, I did submit a supplemental memorandum detailing those findings to Matt Peters yesterday for the Land Use Committee. I would ask that they are incorporated into the record. If that'd be okay, that the committee has seen them.
It would be more appropriate in order to keep us clean if you did the finding of facts verbally.
Sure, I can do that as well.
Thank you.
Sure, of course. Thank you. And just first, I'd like to briefly address the agency reports. While we fully respect and appreciate their comments, you know, the Department of Planning and the Department of Planning report, the BMZ report, you know, we disagree and we think they're incorrect in recommending that this property is best suited and should be preserved for industrial uses. You know, this is proven true when you actually drill down and look at the property, the surrounding area. It's very noteworthy that the Planning Commission voted unanimously that they did not concur with the staff report and recommended that the council pass this legislation. You know, while there are industrial uses to the northwest and south, the parcels to the immediate east of the property are all commercial uses, which are predominantly motor vehicle service related. In fact, as Councilperson McGray noted, 5501 Pulaski Highway, which is the property that joins the subject property to the east, that was rezoned weeks before the passage of Transform Baltimore to allow motor vehicle sales, and they've been operating as a used car business ever since. Additionally, the properties to the northeast are residential. Further, while the applicant agrees that it's important to preserve industrial areas, the rezoning of this property is not going to hinder that goal. This property has been exclusively used for automotive repairs since 2013 and limited automotive vehicle sales since 2016, and the rail tracks that Planning Staff and other staff refer to, which are to the west of the subject property, they sit approximately 15 feet above the property. So it would take a significant investment on the part of the owner to convert the property to that industrial use that would have access to those tracks, and the owner has no intention of doing that. They want to continue to use this as a motor vehicle sales repair shop and auto sales and repair. Just to provide some context of the zoning history and why the request is being made, Shelly Kim and Alex Kim are the owners and operators of CBK Realty, Inc. The Kims are a first-generation Korean-American family. They purchased the property in September 2013, as I mentioned. They have enormous amount of pride in their business and the services they offer to Baltimore area and District 2. One particular area they wanted me to highlight is their commitment to providing employment opportunities to ex-offenders and others that have difficulty finding employment. They have also committed to beautifying the property, so this will allow it to be more aesthetically pleasing for Pulaski Highway and for the residents that are living nearby. They're committed to remaining a valuable asset and partner with the Baltimore community. We need this rezoning in order to remain a viable, long-lasting business. There were letters of support that I submitted as Exhibit A and a beautification plan as Exhibit B that were provided to the Land Use Subcommittee. At the time the property was purchased, it was zoned M21. Now, the M21 zoning permitted motor vehicle repairs by right but not motor vehicle sales. As I said, the Kims operated a motor vehicle repair business in the subject property since they purchased it, and then in 2016, they received accessory use approval for limited automotive sales. Now, this has many restrictions on it. They're not allowed to display more than six vehicles or sell more than six vehicles at a time. Now, importantly to the mistake, on November 18th, 2016, the adjacent property, 5501, that was rezoned from the M21 zoning district to the B32 zoning district. Now, this happened just weeks before Transform Baltimore went into effect. So despite being located on the adjacent parcel, and you know, when I actually say adjacent parcel, they share a parking lot, these two properties, the Kims are prohibited from using their property for motor vehicle sales as a primary use, and they're subject to the restrictions of their accessory use approval, while the neighboring 5501 has a buy right commercial use for auto sales. Now, when Transform Baltimore was passed in December 5th of 2016, both 5401 and 5501 were rezoned to this I-1 zoning district. And the I-1 zoning district, it's intended to provide for manufacturing, fabricating, processing, wholesaling, distributing, and warehousing uses. Now, neither motor vehicle repairs nor sales are permitted by right in the I-1 zoning district. Alternatively, in the C-4 zoning district, it's intended for areas of intense commercial uses, including uses related to motor vehicles, and it permits motor vehicle repairs and sales by right, which is what both of these properties were being used for at the time that Transform Baltimore went into effect. You know, we think that the I-1, or we believe the I-1 zoning designation represents a mistake under 5-508B, the zoning code that justifies this request. The City Council and Planning Staff failed to take into account the existing fact and uses of the subject property and neighboring properties that I just mentioned, and its suitability to be zoned C-4. Now, this request is appropriate to correct that mistake, and specifically, we believe the council failed to take into account that the subject property was being used for motor vehicle repairs since 2013 and limited sales since 2016, that the tracks to the west of the subject property are not readily accessible because of their elevation and would require significant investment to access, making the subject property undesirable for industrial uses, and that the adjacent property, 5501, has been exclusively used for commercial motor vehicle sales since 2016 and was rezoned to a business district on November 18th, 2016, weeks before the passage of Transform Baltimore. Now, the council was not aware at the time that they designated this area for I-1 that 5501 would be rezoned to a business district. You know, that rezoning really changed the character of these two parcels. It made them permanently commercial essentially, and the council failed to take that to effect during the last comprehensive zoning. These facts collectively demonstrate that the city's council action regarding the subject property was premised initially on a misapprehension. The granting of this request will allow the property to better serve this surrounding community and permit the uses that are more reflective of the current commercial automotive character of that portion of Pulaski Highway. As I already said, I submitted findings to this effect that detail all this, and for these reasons, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I respectfully request that the committee recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any questions, the committee? Okay, if there's questions from the committee, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder for everyone joining us from the public, please use the raise hand function if you would like to testify. Next, we have Justin Williams.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name's Justin Williams from the law firm.
Good afternoon, Justin.
Are anybody hear me?
Yeah, you're good. Good afternoon.
Right. My name is Justin Williams, for the record, from the law firm Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, who represents the adjoining property owner, 5501 Pulaski LLC, which owns the abutting property that was referenced in Mr. DiCarlo's testimony. We just wanted the record to reflect that we oppose the legislation on the basis of the letter that we submitted to the committee a few months ago. Happy answering any questions aboard, sorry, happy answering any questions the committee may have.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Any questions for committee?
Mr. Chair, can you see that letter?
Yeah. Oh. Got the floor, then you married that. Go ahead, Brian.
Can Justin talk about that, please?
Sure. This is just, we submitted a letter back in May 11th, 2020, noting our opposition to the legislation, basically on the basis that the Planning Staff report indicated that there was not a change in mistake present that would justify the rezoning.
And no other reason that planning than the fact that planning said that?
Well, we share their view that we do not believe there was a change in mistake present to justify the rezoning here.
But that's purely bureaucratic. As the adjacent property owner, does your client have any tangible substantive reason that's non-bureaucratic in nature?
There is a concern that a finding that there was a change here, for example, might impact their ability for rezoning in the future.
Can you help me understand that a little bit better?
Well, so here, for example, if the committee finds there is in fact a change defy the rezoning of 5401 Pulaski Highway to the requested zoning district, if in the future my client, who wants 5501 Pulaski Highway, sought to seek a rezoning to some different category or maybe the same category, if there was a change here, you know, if the committee found that there was in fact a change here, then that would have some impact on our future zoning. And I mean, it's not clear what that would be. It might not be adverse, but it might be, so that's the reason we're just going to objection for the record.
Okay, Catherine.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
As we're going through the committee reports, I also didn't hear requests for comments or questions, rather, the agency reports. I was curious what BMZA's position was as well, but...
Yeah, Councilman, BMZA was unfavorable.
Yeah, but I didn't really understand why. I mean, it's a curiosity to me in general, because I don't understand why bills of this nature have to go to the Planning Department and BMZA and DHCD. There seems to be such overlapping concerns there. I just, I don't understand the, I'm curious of the nature of BMZA's opposition.
My only answer to that, Councilman, is that's the system. That's how it's been unless you guys want to try to change it next year, but the president's decision on what agency it goes to to come out with reports, those reports for them agencies, you understand this, you know this, I've said it a thousand times, is their opinion and their recommendation, and it's up to the council to make that decision.
Sure, but they didn't, I guess my curiosity is, BMZA, BMZA did not defer, saying, "We take no position, we defer to another agency," so they must have an independent reason of their own, and I'm curious what that is.
Yes, I mean, that's a good question. Usually, they don't say, "We defer to the Planning Staff," so...
If BMZA could explain their opposition, I'd be, I'd like to hear it.
No, it's democracy. I'm going to BMZA. Can you, can you answer the councilman's question or concern?
Yes, I can. So the BMZA agreed with the Planning Department's assessment that there wasn't any mistake or irregularity in this instance. Also, if you look at the plat map, like if that's the correct one, it is completely surrounded by industrial zoning, and you know, the city, we try to keep our industrial zones in place and not change them. Also noting, I know that the attorney spoke a lot about how these are good property owners, and they've had this used for a while, but zoning does run with the land, so if they could sell this land tomorrow, in any decision the council makes, if they change that zone, it's changed permanently until, you know, there's another transform. So those are BMZA's reasons.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Councilman, does that take care of your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Well, I was going to ask the same question as my colleague, but I'd like to ask it to Mr. Williams.
Who?
Mr. Williams is representing 55...
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
So, Mr. Williams, isn't it that your, that your client is zoned commercial now? And that's zoned commercial back in, I guess, when Transform was being worked on, before it was adopted? Is that correct?
It's totally not correct. So the order of events was, it got rezoned prior to Transform Baltimore's enactment to a commercial district. However, when Transform Baltimore was adopted, it got rezoned back to the industrial destination that is the same that 5401 has as well.
So that's what the, I'm sorry, I did not get to read all the letters in that file this time. It was such a long file, and I apologize. So actually, your neighbor is I-1, right? Industrial 1?
I believe that's right. We both share the same zoning designation.
So are they operating commercially?
They were grandfathered in because they got the BMZA approval for, to operate a motor vehicle dealership prior to 2016.
So they're operating commercially because they are the best argument for why the 50, the client, the land use hearing of 5401, it is basically now trying to get zoned to do what 55, oh, 5401 is trying to do what 5501 is doing now. And to do it, they need this rezoning, and it was, and they were sitting there, being a commercial operation, while Transform was going on, but were nonetheless zoned something that they weren't operating as.
That sounds correct.
No? Okay, thank you. Any other calls, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we have anybody else who has signed up to testify.
Okay, thanks. So at this time, committee, at this time, I need a finding of facts. Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
So moved. Costello?
Costello moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of the finding of facts, aye, aye?
Aye.
There's no amendments to this bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorable?
Motion to move the bill favorably by Costello.
Move by Costello, second by Clark. We're going to take a vote on the bill. Just bear with me. Riceinger vote, Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes. Middleton is absent. She's got a prior commitment. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes. Councilman Robert Stokes? See one? No? Okay. So we have Councilwoman Stokes absent, so we have, we have six yes with two absent. The bill passed as favorable. City Council Bill 20-0508 will come out November 2nd for second reading. We are now going to City Council Bill 020-0567. This is a rezoning of 407 Bedding House Road for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 407 Bedding House Road, Block 5014C, with Lot 004A, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and it's being rezoned from the R3 zoning district to the OR1 zoning district. I just want to state that all the public notice required have been met, and at this time, if the sponsor's here, we sponsored the bill. Councilman Henry, are you present?
I am, sir.
You got the floor. Go ahead, you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. This is a fairly self-explanatory piece. This piece of property has long been used for commercial purposes, but even though it's surrounded by other commercial properties, it was left zoned residential in the last comprehensive rezoning. In retrospect, it probably should have been zoned some version of commercial, and that is the point that the new property owner is trying to make, since he would like to make it an accessory parking space for adjacent commercial. And so he reached out to my office, we reached out to the surrounding community and property owners. There is a mix... Uh, there is a mix of support and lack of objection, uh, and so, uh, I was comfortable in moving this forward. And I know that the Planning Commission, uh, has objections, but that, I'm sorry, the planning staff, planning department had objections, but the Planning Commission, um, approved the findings of fact that the applicant, uh, produced, and those are in your file, and I would, uh, look for a favorable report today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, does any committee members have a, a question or anything for Councilman Henry? No? Thank you, Councilman Henry. We'll move on to, uh, agency reports. Staff, any staff?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the, uh, committee. I think, uh, Councilman Henry's captioning was, uh, spot on, uh, though we disagreed with this proposal. The Planning Commission found, uh, the evidence provided by the applicant, uh, compelling and recommended favorable on this bill. And I believe you should hopefully have, uh, the applicant's submittal, uh, which was a series of slides that was quite a large file, so hopefully it did make it to you. Uh, you'll probably want to use that as a basis for your findings of fact.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I just, uh, you look at the map, at the bottom of that property going south, I think it's south, is it OR1 zoning next to it?
It is, it is R3 in the immediately surrounding, uh, properties, and then let me look at the map here in the side. Uh, I think you have to go about a half a block away to get to the R1 homes.
Okay. But there is an OR1 zoning near there, correct?
Uh, there is a, a couple of buildings that are OR1 that's about a block away, but these buildings, uh, are right behind some C2, uh, commercial that front on York Road. So that was, you know, part of the discussion the Planning Commission had.
Right.
But this is kind of an odd little, uh, couple of properties that are sort of behind the commercial corridor, but not really in residential area, so it's, it's this transitional little piece here.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Does, uh, any of the committee members have a question for Mr. Tiso? No? Thank you, Eric. Uh, BMZA?
The BMZA recommends disapproval of this bill. Um, we agree with the planning department staff's initial memo about, um, how the OR1 is usually designed to be that transition between residential and commercial, and this is a pretty small parcel, so it doesn't quite fit that definition, and BMZA is new.
Okay. Any questions for BMZA? Councilman Henry?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I think, um, Councilman Dorsey might have been asking a similar question with a previous hearing, but I was also trying to balance a phone call, but I'm not sure if I got the right answer. Um, it, it, when, uh, when the BMZA is, uh, coming up with its, uh, agency reports for these, you have access to the planning department's report?
Correct.
For that, but you don't do your, um, agency deliberations in an open public meeting like the Planning Commission does, or do you?
We do not. So we don't treat our bill, our bill reports are not done similar to the way we do like our full zoning hearings, um, since we're not voting and making, since it's just a recommendation and not the official decision, because obviously it's up to the council, um, it's just our review based on the records that are submitted at the time we respond to the bill, but we do not have the full hearing process like we do for zoning hearings.
Right. So you had access to the planning staff report, but you did not have access to the applicant's response to the planning staff report that the Planning Commission found compelling enough to accept?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I was, I was pretty sure that was the way that this worked. I just wanted to check. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Cas, Henry. Thank you for going down a rabbit hole. Appreciate it.
Question? A comment?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. Um, this was one of the best presentations of findings of fact I've seen for a long time. Um, it's what persuaded me. So if the, yeah, if the zoning didn't have access to that, I'm sorry, it was very persuasive. It must be what the commission heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work like that. It's great.
Okay. Uh, there's no other questions for BMZA DOT?
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. Uh, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Let's go to the Law Department.
Um, hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley for the Law Department, and we stand by our report. Um, there were no findings of fact in the staff report. They actually said they, they considered this property, um, during Transform and they decided to zone it R3. So it's going to be nearly impossible to find any facts that say they made a mistake there. It may be that now it looks like you would have selected something else, but that's not a mistake under the law. So we caution that a court will likely see this as spot zoning, but again, it's up to the council to find the facts. I've looked at the facts that were provided, and it, and it gives great reasons for why it might be better had this property been zoned something else, but no facts about why planning's deliberate consideration during Transform was a mistake. Um, not why they made the wrong choice, but why in fact there was a mistake. Um, so again, the Law Department stands by its report. It's up to the council to find the facts.
Thank you, Hillary. Um, before I go to the other two agencies, Councilman Henry, uh, you sponsored the bill. You have, you have anyone that's going to do the finding of facts, or are you going to do the finding of facts?
Um, the finding of, like I, like, as both, uh, Mr. Tiso, uh, and I mentioned, the, the findings of facts that the Planning Commission approved are the ones in the, uh, the presentation. Uh, I'm, uh, what I'm looking for is the wording, and I'm checking to see if I have access to do that.
Well, yeah, I know you, yeah, while you're doing that, I just got a question to Hillary. Um, even though the Planning Commission did theirs, I mean, the council still has to do the finding of facts for the past legal sufficiency, right?
Right. The, the, the planning department didn't, there's no written evidence of their facts that they found. Right.
Yeah, I get it. So, so Councilman Henry could do the finding of facts to the council? That's appropriate? And we vote on it?
Sure. As long as the council finds facts to support that planning made a mistake during Transform, then you've, you have what you need.
Okay. Councilman Henry, can you?
Sure. Um, Mr. Chair, there's a PowerPoint, um, submitted from the planning department, uh, dated August 20th, 2020, that has on slides, I'm trying to get, there we go.
Well, when you get it, can you verbally, just verbally do it so we keep it clean? Okay?
So you want me to just read these out?
Yeah, read, where it's a mistake, read, read, so it'll, it'll pass legal sufficiency and we keep it clean.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is going to take a little bit, but, uh, reason, number one, reason for zoning change, mistake in existing zoning classification, finding of fact, one, population changes, the property live in the Homeland Census tract, tract number 271200. This tract is 1.4 square miles. In the 2010 census, it had a total population of 6103 with 2,469 housing units and an 84% homeownership rate. It is anticipated that the 2020 census data will be consistent with the 2010 data. Two, availability of public facilities. The closest public facilities are, one, Emak Pratt Free Library Govens Branch, two blocks away, two, Govens Elementary School, two blocks away, three, Deweze Park, six blocks away. Item three, present and future transportation patterns. The 400 block of Benning House Road is a narrow two-way street connecting Bologna Avenue with Putney Way. Two cars in opposing directions cannot pass in areas where there is curbside parking. The east side of the street is on Hess Avenue. This is a one-way, one-block-long street connecting Markland Avenue with Benning House Road. There are no plans to change any of these street patterns. MTA buses travel on York Road. There is a bus stop just north of the corner of York and Bologna. Four, compatibility with existing and proposed development. There is no proposed development in the immediate area surrounding the property. The property is owned by Govmoco LLC, which is the same ownership as the Accelerator Building directly across Hess Avenue. Five, recommendations of city agencies and officials. Six, consistency with the city's comprehensive zoning master plan. The intent is to demolish the existing structure on the site to create a small, open park area to support the uses in the Accelerator Building and to ease the occasional traffic congestion on Hess Avenue. The uses in the Accelerator Building are BeMore Kitchen, the Accelerator Event Space, Full-Tile Brewery, and Hex Ferment. Renovation and repurposing of the Accelerator Building in 2016 is a multi-use facility is con, wholly consistent with the 2006 comprehensive zoning master plan. Changing zoning classification for subject properties, mistake. Prior to its purchase by Govmoco LLC in February 2020, 407 Benning House Road had been used as an office for many years. The property has 1,700 square feet of land area and is improved with a two-story frame structure that had been converted solely for office use. The 400 block of Benning House Road from Betelona Avenue to the alley behind the houses on Putney Way is predominantly commercial in nature. The immediately surrounding structures that lie within the R3 zoning classification include 402 Benning House Road, which is used as Homeland Autobody Repair Shop and Open Parking, 405 Benning House Road, the only remaining residential structure that is owned by Homeland Autobody, 408 Benning House Road, open parking to support the Accelerator Building uses, 406 Markland Avenue, a residential structure believed to be abandoned, and 45504 York Road is Tunbridge Academy Charter School. It is unlikely that this small area between Bologna and the alley between Putney Way will be viewed as a desirable residential district. Additional standards?
Thank you.
Oh.
Are you finished?
Well, there's still a page of additional standards general that were included in the applicant's findings of fact.
So Hillary, is that appropriate? I hate to put you off the spot, but.
Well, I mean, you've certainly given evidence why it, it should not be residential, but I still haven't heard any facts about why the Planning Commission actually made a mistake. I mean, from what I'm understanding, but, but again, you know, this is most of these rezonings, there has to be evidence that planning had a, like, basically a clerical error. You have staff saying we wanted to zone it residential. Like, past commercial uses are just really evidence that planning, let's try to get this character back to residential. But again, I mean, that is for you to determine whether the facts are sufficient to proceed. You know, I can only give you the legal standard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Counsel, who's, who's speaking?
Uh, Councilwoman Clark and I requested your attention.
Go ahead. Councilman Henry, name more.
Okay. Um, so, um, Hillary, I, I, at, at the risk of sounding bizarre when I ask, is, what, is there a legal definition of what a mistake is? Um, is, is, so you're, it sounds like you're saying that the Planning Commission's conscious decision to make a bad choice doesn't constitute a mistake?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And that's exactly what our bill reports for all these rezonings under mistake detail. It can't just be, it was a bad decision. It has to show that, you know, planning did not know of the facts at the time, or they didn't understand what was going on in the property. I mean, when you have a staff report that says, no, we purposely selected this and the council approved it, that, that's probably not going to meet the legal standard for mistake.
So, but here's the, here's the, here's the real issue is the Planning Commission doesn't zone things, the, the city council and the mayor don't. So when we say something was a mistake, really mean that the city council made a mistake?
Correct. That is absolutely correct.
So as the councilperson for this district, I can say that I did not have it brought to my attention that there was a conscious decision being made by planning to zone this properly, property different from how it was actually being used. Because if that had been made clear to me, I would have questioned that because I don't necessarily share planning's decision that this area should be kept residential or tried to maintain in some residential character. So if I'm testifying that I didn't mean to try to keep this area residential back in 2016, would that constitute a mistake?
Um, I, I don't know if the court would take just your word for it, if they'd go back and look and see if, you know, if residential was listed on those maps, you know, what, what were the hea, what was the hearing at the time? You know, again, this is just going to sort of the, the quantity of the evidence, but certainly it seems a lot more like, you know, page two of our, of the report details what's, what, what does a court believe a mistake is, and this is certainly a lot closer to that. Um, failing to take into account existing facts, or action premised on a misapprehension, or, um, you know, that's different than just bad judgment. Knowing everything and making a bad judgment is different than, you know, not taking into account certain facts. I can't tell you whether a court would feel like your testimony alone was sufficient or not, but that's, again, a, a lot closer to the standard.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would like to just tell you why I decided to support this. I read the reports and understood that there is this building that is, um, it's called the, uh, Accelerator Building, as across the street from this lot. It has a variety of uses in it. You heard about the traffic and trouble on the streets with the parking and the, and the traffic back and forth. I thought, uh, what they were saying was that the, the, they are cre, demolishing the properties on the subject property and creating a place to park to get some of the cars off the street from across, from the accelerator so that traffic would, and parking would be easier. Made sense to me, but it certainly was something that nobody who was doing, um, Transform could have known in advance because this, you know, this problem is developed with the parking and the traffic as the accelerator added uses, and now it's in front of us. It was, it was a mistake, I guess, not to know that was going to happen and this need would occur, but actually thinking, and I said, yeah, that makes sense, because I saw all the zoning around it, but then I understood why they were, why they were doing this, and I, I decided to support it. So that's something that nobody knew. It's not, maybe it's a mistake not to be able to read, uh, read into the picture.
Yeah, Councilwoman, you know, Hillary and to the committee, uh, the process is that planning staff gave the report, which was unfavorable, that's their opinion. It came to a public hearing with the Planning Commission, who disagreed with planning staff, and then they punt the ball over to the city council. Uh, so we received the Planning Commission's, uh, report, which was favorable, and we received planning staff's report, which was unfavorable. And again, it's up to the council to make that decision and the finding of facts. So the, the thing is, is that we as a body will have to vote to accept the report, the finding of facts from Councilman Henry and, and, and go from there, and, uh, because I don't want to go too far into the weeds with it, but if someone disagrees with that, then they would have to take it to court. Right, Hillary? Because I don't want to go too far in the weeds with this. Am I right?
Well, yeah, I mean, assuming the bill passes and it, um, and goes into law, then a challenge would be. challenge would be.
Right, so, okay. Councilman Henry, are you good with that? Go ahead, you got.
One quick question for Hillary, which is, what's the, I guess, the statute of limitations on that? How long would someone have to take us to court?
I don't know exactly the answer to that. I can look it up. You know, it, it's, it probably depends on who takes you, you know.
It, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't alter my, my position. I'm just curious, because right now, I know that no one who is currently a property owner around there has a problem with this, so none of the current people are going to take the court over this, because they could have just checked it. But if it's like a five-year, you know, time, you know, that people have to complain, then I just, it would be good to know that I wanted to check it on.
I will double, I'll double check while we're in the hearing. It's probably three years, but I will double check.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Henry, is that it? Okay, thank you. We will now go to HCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing. We stand by our report, no objection.
Thank you. BDC?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, this is Christina Moore from BDC. We stand by our report in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on public testimony, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a reminder for everyone who is joining us from the public, if you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. Mr. Chair, it does not look like we have anybody who wants to testify on this call.
Okay, thank you, that's good. So, no public testimony? Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
I'll move it.
Councilwoman Clark moves to finding of facts, do I have a second?
Sneed will second.
Who?
Sneed.
Sneed, okay, thank you, Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Finding of facts is passed, there's no amendments to this bill. So at this time, we will take a vote on Bill 20-567. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Costello?
Yes.
Costello is yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton is absent, prior commitment. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's yes, Stokes? Stokes? Stokes is absent? Okay. Yeah, let me, I was, I was questioning, going to, let me back. There was a motion to move the bill favorable by, by Clark and, and second by Sneed, am I correct?
But so moved.
Okay. And second by Sneed, okay. And vice seat votes yes, to keep it clean, vice seat votes yes, Sneed voted, voted yes, Clark voted yes, Costello voted yes, Dorsey voted yes, Middleton's absent, Pinkett voted yes, Robert Stokes is absent, so we have one, two, three.
Well, we, we just have a.
For them to finish, we have six yes with two absent. Councilwoman Clark, you have a, you got a, you, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, so the bill, Bill 20-0567 passes, we'll come out, November the 2nd, this concludes that bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Have a good day. We have one motion left. Just bear with me a second. We are now in city council bill 20-0595. This is a rezoning of 1103 through 1109 North Washington Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1103 through 1109 North Washington Street, Block 50, 1551, Lot 001, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque. And we're rezoning this from a RA zoning district to the IMU1 zoning district. It's my understanding that the notice requirements have been met, and at this time, this is sponsored by Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Sneed, you have the floor, you want to make some comments?
No, just, it's pretty direct. They've always been a furniture-making facility, and when they did transform somehow in a way, it was zoned as RA, and so we just want to correct it.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. We will now go on to planning staff. Agency reports. Planning?
My video, it's turning on. I guess it's not working. Anyways, good afternoon, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, you're good, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Matt Sanus with Baltimore City Planning Department. This city council bill was heard by the planning commission at their, oh no, I don't know, at their, our computer issues. The September 11th commission meeting, the planning commission concurred unanimously with, with the planning department recommendation in support of the bill, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions right now.
Any questions for planning? No, no questions for planning. BMGA?
The BMGA recommends approval of this bill.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Okay, thank you. BC, law department?
Hi, again, Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Ruley for the law department. We stand by our report, and we noted in this one that, that planning noted an actual mistake. They thought perhaps the property was vacant, but it appeared that this was incorrectly rezoned during transform.
Okay, thank you, Hillary. HCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. BDC?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, this is Micah Fetz with Baltimore Development Corporation. BDC stands by our report, our report is favorable.
Thank you. Park Authority?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. We will now have, go into public testimony.
Matt? Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a reminder for everyone joining us from the public, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you'd like to testify, or you can also use the chat function if you're not able to find the button to raise your hand. I see the applicant is here. Mr. Levy, do you have any comments you'd like to add? No response, does not look like there's anybody else who would like to testify on this bill.
Thank you, Matt, this looks pretty clean. I still need a, a motion to move the finding of facts, we have a motion?
So moved.
This is Councilwoman Sneed.
Second, Clark.
Second by Clark. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it. There are no amendments to this bill. At this time, we will take a, I need a motion to move the bill as favorable, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Sneed, thank you, second by Councilwoman Clark. This bill amendments, vice seat votes yes, Sneed?
Yes, and I just want to add that folks should, should check it out, because we have some of the furniture there from City Hall, this furniture maker, but yes.
Actually, I'm planning to, to check it out.
Okay. Sneed's a yes, Clark?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Costello's yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes, Middleton is absent, prior commitment, Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes, Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes is absent. One, two, three, four. We have six yes with two absent. The bill passes, Bill 20-0595 passes favorable with no amendments, and this bill will come out November the 2nd. This concludes the land use hearings. Everyone, thank you and be safe. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.